Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
This is the week's featured pet at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel. It's a stray male Shih Tzu. He is in cage 30 and is eligible for adoption starting Saturday, October 22nd. What, look. He's laying down on the job already. Isn't he, darling? Oh. Oh, he said somebody called. Tony says he dances. Can you dance? What magic word did you use to get him to dance? Where'd Tony go?
Shoes.
There. There. Oh, look at that.
Is that what you make Jim do too, Betty?
Yes. But he dances in circles. Please stop by our dog kennel. We have lots of dogs available for adoption, and we would like you to have one for your pet. Thank you. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to our October 20th meeting. Usually we have a thought for the day, but since we've all been kind of rushed around here, we'll just refer to the thought for the day, which is on our printed agenda. Ted's favorite. Early is on time, and on time is late.
At 9:38.
Madam Clerk.
At 10 o'clock, there will be a tougher hearing for an EMH bond. At 10:15, there will be a presentation by Ken Pierce, Commissioner of Lorraine County Health District, and Tan Conlin, EPA, on the Black River rap. And at 10:30, Jim McConnell, Pittsfield Township Clerk, will be here to discuss solid waste funding. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
I don't think I did investments this week.
I don't remember seeing.
I don't remember seeing.
Well, just in case, I'm gonna move, because I thought I saw some.
I don't think.
You didn't see some?
No.
You're not gonna take my motion?
No.
All right. I won't move.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Advances repayments? Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated in the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez.
Commissioners, we have one or two new hires to briefly discuss. They're at the county home. Plus, probably at the conclusion, we'll have an issue of litigation I want to update you on.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'm requesting an executive session at the end of our regular meeting.
I wrote down executive session.
Excuse me.
I think I knew what that meant.
Decision on an Expedited One Annexation of 11.1324 acres from Pittsfield Township to the city of Oberlin, Ohio. Attorney John Clark is agent for petitioner Land Concepts Company, Inc., Richard E. Newark, President.
Is Mr. Clark here?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to make a comment to the board, please?
I don't have much in the way to comment, as indicated in the petition. This is under the expedited type one. So, my understanding is it is not subject to a hearing, but is only subject to your passing the resolution, your consideration of the resolution.
Okay. Jerry, do you have comments for us?
Mr. Clark is correct. This is not a public hearing type thing, although as with any issue, if you have questions or wish to elicit any comment, you're permitted to. This is one of those kinds that you pretty much have to just go through the elements, and if they're all present, then the Board of Commissioners is required to go forward with the annexation. I think, according to the clerk, we have all the things necessary to be filed.
Everything was received. The tax agreement was submitted as part of the annexation petition. There was a letter received from the Engineers Office in regards to the annexation, too. Nice, pretty colored maps.
Now, just to add the benefit of seeing this this morning, I looked at the larger map during the week, and I thought that this parcel is, and it shows here, it is adjacent to, and it says, "previous annexation."
Just to kind of go through, according to the statute, you have to have the petition with the signature of the property owners. You have to have an accurate legal description, the map of the territory, and the name of a person who acts as agent. And I believe we have all those things. You have to have a list of all the tracks and lots adjacent to the territory seeking to be annexed. And in this case, we have an agreement between the township and the city. Is that correct?
That's correct, and a certified copy was provided.
And what does that agreement provide for? Tax sharing?
Yes.
That's been a longstanding agreement between Pittsfield Township and the city of Oberlin?
Yes, it was passed in by ordinance 1991. I believe it's a 20-year agreement with a 20-year renewal.
Thank you. What are the plans for this property?
It's not been determined. It would come into the city as under, I believe, under Oberlin ordinance as residentially zoned. It's currently residential agricultural.
And the reason sewers, is that the reason for the annexation?
The reason for the annexation, in actuality, is pursuant to a purchase agreement between Land Concepts and a purchaser. So, I'm not representing the purchaser. I can't comment on exactly what the intended use would be.
Well, I've received no objections to this annexation, so I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Established Lorraine County Contribution Chairs for Non-Bargaining Union Employees for the year 2006.
Also moved.
Second.
Mr. Cordez, do you have comments on this?
Well, I have a request. I need to modify this item. I not only want to establish the contribution, participation, cost-sharing levels, but I also want to establish the rates for 2006. As you know, we have many contracted entities out there, because we have allowed the smaller political subdivisions to participate with us in a joint self-insured healthcare plan. So, I wasn't clear in my directions. While I got part of it here, I need the rest of it. And I provided you with a copy of the Finley-Davis Actuary Report about a week, a week and a half ago, and I want to set those rates today so that we can notify our contracted partners of what the upcoming contributions for the plan are going to be for 2006. As the fiduciary of that plan, I believe it necessary for you to establish those rates by resolution each year, so that there's some understanding that you've been notified that this is a necessity. And it's something that we usually do every year. So with that, I'll repass the Finley-Davis report. I think that a simple resolution adopting the rates as established by Finley-Davis, the county's actuary, and also agreeing to maintain the current cost-sharing agreement with the non-bargaining employees would be a sufficient enough resolution to meet all our needs. Now, in that res-
Is this the one that went up like $80?
Yes.
For family plan?
Yes, ma'am. In that resolution, we also need to name Job and Family Services, Golden Acres, 911, Dog and Kennel. And I throw a general caveat there.
EMA, online security?
Yes.
All other departments.
Purchasing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and all those other departments that are under the control of, and I'm gonna say, general fund, a non-general fund Commissioners' umbrella, so that those rates are established. I know a couple of times, we've forgotten to throw a few of them in there, and then we have to come back and modify the resolution. But Theresa, you have the list from years gone by, right?
Yep. So, since I already made a motion, and Mr. Kelo seconded it, what are we approving? I mean, it should have been.
As amended?
Very good, Commissioner. I'll, um, Theresa. I'll include my motion as amended.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Amendment Resolution 05832 adopted October 13, 2005, adopting the tax rate budget. Said amendment will change 2006 inside millage rates from the general fund of 1.60 mils to 1.3 mils, and bond retirement from 0.0 mils to 0.30 mils.
Also moved. Second.
Discussion.
Do you have discussion?
Well, you, I think you know what this means. We've all had discussion on having to redirect inside millage towards debt service in the bond retirement fund, sometimes known as a sinking fund. We've enjoyed the luxury of having a surplus for a few years in that fund, and we haven't had to deliver any current revenue to support debt service. Unfortunately, the parade has ended, and the party's over. We have to send, right now, about $1.8 million of our current operating money that we're bringing in on the inside millage to that debt service. I think I told you how I feel this is gonna affect us next year, and it's gonna be hard to make up this difference in the operating money. Even though sales tax is up somewhat, interest income on Mr. Tellerick's investments are up considerably, it's still a very big nut to cover for next year. And we're probably, we're gonna end this year with about $890,000, thereabouts, on a roll in that account. We're still drawing down. We anticipate ending next year with about $550,000 carryover in the debt service account. And that's not taking into consideration the devaluation that's coming on the personal property. There's about $1 million brought in on the inside millage for personal property tax, and that devaluation is gonna drop anywhere from 25% to 50%. I met with the Budget Commission earlier in the week, and it was one of the better meetings I've had with them. We were all a bit somber in our discussions on this, and I had thought that the devaluation was gonna be less, but Mr. Stewart indicated to me that it may be as high as 50%. So that $550,000 may, in fact, drop to $250,000. And I'm comfortable we have enough of a cushion to, you know, roll through the year. However, next year, excuse me, next year at this time, I will probably be asking you once again to redirect inside millage out of a higher level than the 1.8, possibly as high as 2.2, to debt service. That said, we were counting on, the county was getting reappraised, for lack of another term, in 2006, which should have increased the money coming in on the inside millage for 2007, but we're almost thinking now, by the time they get done with the personal property tax, it's gonna be a wash. We're hoping just to keep our head above water, never mind, you know, gain any yardage. We're getting no traction in this issue at all. And this is one of those things that was passed in that House Bill 66. This is one of those hidden things that's gonna affect us quite significantly on the income. When they phase out that whole personal property tax, that's about a million dollars' worth of income to us right now on the inside millage, whether it's going to debt service or operating costs. So, we have to cover this 1.8 million next year somehow in our budget, and the revenue and the operating costs are starting to eclipse quite seriously. And we'll be having those discussions. We've had some, and we're gonna continue to have them. It's gonna be a rough year.
All county employees wear sweaters this winter.
Thermostat's at 62.
That's right.
Oh, it's been at 62, and you won't get it fixed.
Well, you noticed the windows have been fixed.
I was gonna say, we'll save some money on the windows being repaired.
But- The commercial activity tax is not gonna make up anything for the loss of the personal property tax, and a roll down over the next five years is going to impact our budget severely.
Yes, Commissioner, and I know you've been following this pretty closely. It's gonna be hard. Some of our revenue streams are being taken away. You know, it's one thing for them to be reduced, it's another thing for the state to take away. It was similar to the tax that Commissioner Blair talked about, the 25% fee on the injured attorney fee qualification sheet that you could pay the $25 before you got your attorney just to apply. Well, they have no money needing attorney. How good are we gonna be getting the $25?
And most of the judges are gonna waive that anyway.
Correct.
So, I mean, they're not gonna be able to request someone who has no money to pay $25 just to help pay for an injured attorney.
Well, you're trying, you're supposed to try to extract it from your friends or your relatives.
That's what they said. Maybe your friends would pay it, or, you know. But the strangest part is, we have to go, now we have to go through probably what's gonna cost us, $50 to $100, filling out an application, reviewing the application, filing the application, putting it into a debt service account, because it's a debt that has to be collected, and which we know we're not gonna collect. So now, we're gonna spend $100, you know, possibly more, to have a debt account for $25 we're not gonna get. And the state says, this is to offset the reduction in what we give you as our fair share for these attorney fees, which is now down to 27%. Okay? It's irresponsible behavior upon the state. It's been irresponsible behavior upon the state for a long time, and they continue to neglect the needs of the local government, and they continue to neglect the promises they made to us years ago.
And Columbus wonders why we didn't send a thank you card.
I gotta stop now, Commissioner, because I just-
Thank goodness. But we can't get divorced from the state, so, all right. Ma'am Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Forgive various advances to the filing departments. $20,000 fund, 760 prosecutors, victim, witness, 1994. $67,000 Lorraine County Transit, 1995. $2,700 fund, 821, Chown Family First, early start, 1998. $883.19 fund, 823, Chown Families, Family Stability, 2000. And $133,009.32 fund, 820, Chown Family First Administration, 1998 to 2004.
Also moved.
I'll second. Just clean up. Jim?
Yes, what we're trying to do, Commissioners, is to go through our books. We carry a lot of advances on our books. The Children and Family First funds, at the end of their fiscal year, if their money's exhausted, carrying that advance is ridiculous. We're not gonna get anything back. We're not allowed to go into an additional program year. And just for clarification, if their 2005 year ended with the beginning of the fiscal year on July 1st for 2006, the state fiscal year begins July 1st. Once we scrub the books down, which will happen in July and August, if there's no additional resources there to pay that advance, we should liquidate those advances and either give amnesty on them and write them down at that point. We shouldn't continue to carry them. When I was working with Shelley, I told her, I just wanna clean these books. I wanna get all this old stuff that we're never gonna get paid, ever, and I wanna get it written off. That said, I am pleased to tell you that, over the last four months, with your support, that I've been working on restructuring the Children and Family First staffing and what we do over there, and I believe at this point, with changing the staffing and also re-looking at how we draw down funds, which there was some issues with that possibly not being done as accurately as I would like, I believe this Children and Family First will now be self-supporting. We may need to give them some advances because of the cyclic nature of where the funds come in, to carry the administrative operation till we get the money back. But I am comfortable that, in fact, they should enjoy a small surplus in the admin, and they may be able to afford a piece of paper and a pen these days, because it's been so lean over there. And with the support of this board, I was able to reduce some significant restructuring over there. And the last piece comes in, we're still looking for a quasi-admin fiscal person over there. And once we fill that slot, and it'll be in a salary range that the operation can afford, I'll feel much more comfortable that we're doing the job in the best way over there. So, I would appreciate your support. I know these debts will run up with different boards being here, but they were necessary at the time to continue operation, recognizing that, especially with Children and Family First, we brought millions of dollars into the community with that assistance on that admin money to keep the place running. So, it was good at the time that we did that, and we're doing a better job now.
Ma'am Clerk? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Recent HVAC plumbing contract to suburban process piping Lorraine for Lorraine County Administration Building for renovation project.
Commissioners, at this time, I would like to request an immediate executive session to talk about a pending matter of litigation with counsel.
No, I think that we can handle this at the end. I would request, if we need an executive session, that we handle it in the order. We have three scheduled appointments, and I'm not in favor of doing this now. What's your pleasure?
Can we wait till the end?
Certainly. Whatever the pleasure of the board. But before we take action on this, I think we need to speak to counsel.
That's fine. Hold that item until the end.
Do you want me to do the next, hopefully get the next two in, and then do the public hearing?
Mm-hmm. You've got two minutes.
Okay. Community Development awarded contract to class construction Avon Lake in the amount of $8,580 for William Holtzman Jr. at 8458 West Ridge Road, Illyria Township, to receive a loan for a roof repair. One quote was received. The total amount includes a 10% contingency for any unforeseen change orders in the amount of $780.
Also moved.
I'll second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Golden Acres award various contracts on behalf of Golden Acres, Zack Enterprises Limited, DBA Clinical Health Laboratories Cleveland, to provide clinical laboratory services for the residents effective retroactive August 30, 2005, for a one-year period. Omni Care Respiratory Services LLC Mason to provide a source of oxygen, oxygen therapy equipment, and oxygen services effective October 15 through October 14, 2007. And Lorraine Life Care Ambulance, Illyria, to provide medical transportation services effective October 1 through October 1, 2006.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Jim? No. Okay. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under Job and Families, approved entering contracts between Child Support Enforcement Agency and LCT and Lake Screen Printing for the creation and display of bus advertising signs to be paid from account other expenses. And authorized CSCE director to execute contracts on behalf of the board with prosecutors per last due form for child support and lake screen printing for 60 advertising signs that cost $5,520. And child support and LCT for display of signs for a period of five months that cost $24,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Do we should go into the public hearing now?
Yeah. Okay. Uh, there's a public hearing on for the Illyria Memorial Hospital Bond. I don't know. I think Rebecca's gonna-
Rebecca, are you going to handle this? Rebecca Jones, Army Community Development. Thank you, and good morning.
Good morning, Rebecca Jones, Lorraine County Community Development Department. We have a public hearing this morning for a project with EMH Regional Medical Center. It is a Chapter 140 hospital bond project. They are proposing a $47 million investment. They'll be refinancing $35 million, and then there will be a $12 million investment in the center in Illyria. Here this morning to discuss the project is Mr. Tom Trotter and Mr. David Cook, who is the Vice President and Chief Financial Officer for EMH. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Trotter. He's bond counsel for EMH at this time.
Good morning, Mr. Trotter.
Good morning. My name's Tom Trotter. I'm with the law firm Buckingham, Doolittle &amp; Burrows. We're bond counsel for EMH Regional Medical Center, and we've been working with Vori Sater, Seymour &amp; Pease, the bond counsel for the county, on these documents and procedures. With me is Dave Cook, Vice President, Finance, and CFO of EMH Regional Medical Center. The county issued bonds in 1995 for improvements to EMH Regional Medical Center, also issued bonds in 1997 and 2001. EMH is now requesting the county to refinance those 1995 bonds to enable them to achieve interest cost savings, and, as Rebecca pointed out, to finance new projects at the facility. The new projects include renovation of the eighth floor of the hospital for patient care units, the acquisition and installation of a new information technology system, and the acquisition and installation of new hospital equipment. Although, a Chapter 140 bond issue does not require a demonstration of new employment, these projects will, in fact, create new jobs. The EMH currently employs approximately 1,760 people. At the conclusion of these projects, EMH expects to have that employment increase to approximately 1,830, so about 70 new jobs, which would include nurses, nurse technicians, clerical, staff, and information technology persons. The interest savings by virtue of the refunding will enable EMH to continue to provide cost-effective healthcare services for the county. And as always, with these types of bond issues, the county has no financial liability with respect to the bonds, and EMH has agreed to indemnify the county against any cost, liability, and attorney's fees in connection with the financing.
Thank you. Do you have comments, Mr. Cordez?
Yes, Commissioners, I have been in dialogue with bond counsel, and all the due diligence has been accomplished, and they have no objections or problems with us moving forward. We've had a good relationship with EMH, and I would encourage you to continue to support them. They've been a great employer and provider of services in Lorraine County.
Thank you. Perhaps the, I'm sorry, David, I didn't get your last name, but the representative from the hospital would like to make a comment.
No, Tom described what we're trying to do very well. We want to add capacity for more patients on the eighth floor. On the eighth floor of the main building, which is currently conference rooms and so forth, we are concerned about, in the coming years, having enough space for all the patients that we need to serve.
Thank you for coming this morning. Commissioners, do you have questions?
No.
And Rebecca, I assume that Mr. Cordez defined your recommendation adequately.
Yes, he certainly did. Thank you.
All right, then. I'll move for approval of the issuance of bonds as detailed.
Close the public hearing first.
I think that's ridiculous, but I'll so move.
Sorry.
I really think it's ridiculous.
I know.
Why would you move to close the public hearing? But I'll do so, because you made me, Theresa. I moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
Because the clerk insists.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Now, Theresa, may I move to-
You can't.
Now, Teresa, may I move to approve the issuance of these bonds? I'll so move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going back to the regular agenda then?
Number 18?
That's where we're at. Yes, solid waste.
Under solid waste, number 18, approved funding in the amount of $250,000 over and above the budget amount of $1.2 million to be divided among the political subdivisions in Lorraine County that will be applying for funding for the recycling programs to be paid from a recycling grant account as recommended by the Solid Waste Policy Committee for the year 2006.
As a member of the Solid Waste Policy Advisory Committee, and having been in attendance the day they discussed this, I would move for approval of the recommendation.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions, deletions of personnel in Lorraine County Children's Services Department to utilize their Shell Oil Gasoline credit card not to exceed 200, and the agency's MasterCard not to exceed 2,500 for the year 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, approve and enter an agreement with Compass Group, Inc., North Carolina, for the manual food services for the detention home. Two bids were received, this being the most responsive complying with the specifications, and based on the bid for 300 calorie per day meals, the cost will be $2.44 per meal. Agreement will be effective October 15th, 2005, with option to continue for a consecutive one-year term for year-to-year thereafter, exercise no later than 60 days prior to the end of the term by written notice, and contains the 90-day clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, approve and enter an contract with Bromel Engineering and Surveying Company, Inc., Avon, in the amount of $24,500 to provide engineering services for the design of a new bridge on Mills Road over Mills Creek. This will be paid from professional services account and authorize the engineer to execute on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Declare it necessary to construct sanitary sewers and appetituses in Lorraine County General Sewer District along Rolling Heights Avenue, Sheffield Township. Schedule a public hearing and notify residents of assessments.
Mr. Cordez? Well, I was waiting for a lead-in. Well, motion and then discussion. I can discuss it before that if you want. This is the next step, Commissioners, in providing these two sewers. What's from Commissioner Blair?
Nothing. Nothing.
Go ahead, Jim. Explain the next step we have. I enjoy talking about sewers.
Well, we've been working on these projects for a number of years. Some of these have been worked on for 10 years. These are petition sewers. They have a, there's above 62% either inland or population request on these two sewers. We need to do the notice of necessity, the resolution of necessity, and then you need to set the date. There is no date yet set for the public hearing, so we need to set that date here. So I don't know when you want to do this, how you want to do it, but this starts the process, and I need to say you're not voting on a sewer right now, all right? So you're only voting to move the process to where you would take public input, public discussion, and then review the matter further, and at some future date, you'll make a decision. But you have to have this notice of necessity before you can complete that part of the project, or part of the process, excuse me.
Questions? I'll so move.
We need the date.
You have to include the date here?
Yes.
Would you like, because once you establish a date, then I have to go back 24 days in order to count the days to get the notices, and I have to go two weeks after that to get the publication.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't you hold this until next week and establish a date that fits in with your timeframe and everything else? Would that be better than...
Or can you do that for us now, Teresa?
I can do that for you now.
Let's do it and get it over with.
Do you want December? November? January?
November's fine.
Very flexible.
November's fine. What's our dates in November?
I think that's a decision you should make as the clerk. I assume we'll have this on our regular meeting day.
We can do that, or we can do a different date. We're looking at, I mean, 24 days is going to be Thanksgiving time, which we're not going to be meeting on Thanksgiving Day.
Why not?
Well, you're making all kinds of decisions, aren't you?
I could bring the pastries.
We're close, unless you're going to open.
No, that's okay. Pick the dates so we can get this started. I'm sure public hearings is one of our first sewers.
I mean, December 1st, we could possibly do that, then I'd have to just go back and double-count the days to make sure they're in order, but December 1st, it's on the Thursday?
December 1st. Can we do them both?
We want a time, too. I'm sorry.
So can we do them both?
You have to do them separately.
You would have to do them separate, but you can do them that same morning.
Same day.
Yes.
So do we want to do it after our board meeting?
Yes.
Break for lunch and then do it? Or do it?
What's past practice, Jim?
The last time we went out to the college, and we had four big meetings out there, so we really don't, we don't do enough sewer projects to have a practice.
I mean, we can always have it on a separate day of the week if you want to, as a regular day, and you can do it all.
Being that these two projects are so closely parallel to each other, or we're in the same area of the county, I think it's probably best that we cascade them on the same day. And I would recommend that after our regular board meeting, we schedule an hour for each one for that, probably beginning sometime around 11 o'clock unless we have additional. Or if you feel comfortable, you want to do it after lunch, we can start at 1:00, and then we'll give it whatever time it needs to be heard. Sometimes these things go quick, and sometimes they take a couple hours.
Well, they're petition sewers, so the people are requesting...
Commissioner, I got to tell you, the 62, or 65, or 70% that requested will go to work, the other 30 will show up here.
Right.
30% will show up here, and there are some significant costs involved in both these sewer projects to some of the property owners. So I anticipate a rather robust round of discussion on the sewer. Everybody that wants it will stay home, and everybody that doesn't will be here.
You want to do it at 1:00 and 2:00?
That's fine. Does that work for you, Commissioners?
That's fine.
Okay, let's get them going.
Let me ask you about the 2:00 o'clock one for a moment. If we schedule it at 2:00 and we're not done with the 1:00, we can go later, we just can't go earlier, is that...
Correct.
Okay, Jerry, because this exists so we, in case we need a little bit more time, okay? That'd be great.
Okay. Did I make a motion at all that time, Teresa?
Are we going to combine these two? Are we going to combine these two then, or are they still separate?
No, I think we got separate motions.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we're going to do...
On item number 22...
Rolling Heights at 1:00.
I move for approval establishing the hearing date at December 1st at 1:00 p.m.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
On number 23, Dunton Road, the hearing December 1st at 2:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski? Aye.
So the Commissioners essentially are the equalization board like you would have in the city. We're going to hear their concerns.
You're going to hear their concerns.
And we would make a decision whether that would go forward or not.
Correct, and I don't, we'll have the public hearing. You won't be forced into a decision at that point. We'll open a public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, and then there's some process issues that we have to do, and we'll move forward. I would think that we probably will not have to make a decision until sometime in January because there's an appeal timeframe, too. So this is going to be your first one. It's going to be fun.
Yeah, can't wait.
You're, this is always an exciting process to go through, but there's always interesting conversation. So at that day, you don't have to come prepared for a decision. You only have to come prepared to take input from the public, Commissioner.
Can Pierce Health District note those dates? Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Cordez?
Is there anything left to say?
There's always things left to say, Commissioner. However, since we have a very loaded agenda, I will yield this morning.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ennis?
Just when we go into executive session on litigation, there may be some other issues I'll want to update you pertaining to pending litigation matters.
Thank you, Jerry. Commissioner Laurie?
I have no report this morning.
Busy week, talking to a lot of people about different issues in the county, and had the chance to go to a NOAC meeting. Can't hear me? I'm normally pretty loud, too.
You normally are.
I normally am. Been a very busy week with the possible litigations and being blasted from all sides, and had the opportunity to visit Medina, which Commissioner Blair will expound on with our NOAC meeting last week. They did a very nice job hosting our NOAC meeting, so on to you, Commissioner.
Oh, thank you. I'm not going to talk about Medina, but, sorry, because we have so many presentations this morning, I apologize for talking at all, but I just have to, Rebecca's gone, or maybe she's still here. Rebecca, two seconds, talk about our summit tomorrow.
Two seconds. Everyone come. The summit tomorrow begins at 9:00 a.m. We're pleased to present Carolyn Lukensmeyer, President of America Speaks, Hunter Morrison, former Director of Planning for the City of Cleveland, now with Youngstown State University, and Jack Kleinhens, CEO of Kleinhens &amp; Associates. Thank you, and we'd be happy to see any and all of you there. And we have put together a pamphlet to help in identifying the various groups in Lorraine County that are involved in making our county a better place in which to live, and I want to thank Joyce from my office, and Jennifer Demage downstairs in Office Services for putting this together. It's a really nice pamphlet. I have a few of them up here if you'd like to pick it up. People have asked, what is the Fund for Economic Development? What is Team Neo? What is Team Lorraine County? What is Voices and Choices? And we've got them all mentioned in here with a little blurb and telling a little bit about them to help you better identify the players in this field of working to make Lorraine County a better place in which to live. And I want to tell Commissioner Kayla where I was this spring, I was a little tardy, so I want him, I want him to keep track, and I want him to know that I was dutifully engaged in county business. The Lorraine County Manufacturing Council is having a nanotechnology conference on manufacturing today at Lorraine County Community College, and Lieutenant Governor Bruce Johnson, who is also the Director of the Howard Department of Development, was there, and he was speaking on behalf of the Commissioners. I was asked to make welcoming remarks, which I did, and I stayed for a part of his remarks, but I couldn't stay for all of it because I told him I had to go and introduce a dog. And it was a cute little doctor, very cute. The slide presentation that he gave, it talked a lot about the manufacturing in the state of Ohio and its viability, and I think that's important to our county. And then he went on to talk about the issue 1, which is very important to Lorraine County, and it's the old issue 2, which has been incorporated into issue 1. So that's important. We're going to vote on that on November 8th, and he had some interesting slides, but at that time, I had to leave. But I see we have a lot of township people here this morning, and they're all interested in that issue 2 because it brings a lot of money back to their communities for roads, et cetera, and it's an important issue for our county. So talk to your friends and neighbors and tell them about the importance of the renewal of the issue 2 program under issue 1. That's my song and dance for now. Thank you, Teresa.
Just to note that Monday, this coming Monday, October 24th, at 9:30, is starting our annexation hearing on that 224.13 acres in Carlisle from the City of Alaria. For correspondence.
I move the reading be waived, but I want to call your attention to item number 14. It's asking for blood donations for Sean Berry, a 13-year-old student at South Amherst Middle School. He is an active 4-H member, and this was announced at the 4-H volunteer appreciation, and I thought it would be appropriate if we carried on our agenda so that anybody that could participate would know about it. I think I moved to waves of reading after I said all that.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
I guess we'll go to our 10:15 appointment?
Great.
Mr. Ken Pierce?
Our Health Commissioner from the county is here, and in tandem with Ted Conlin, who is with the EAPA, and he's also the point person on the Black River RAP. Ted's Ken's the chairperson.
That's right.
Yes, so thank you for coming.
It's my pleasure to be here. Thank you, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, to talk about the Black River and the success that we've had over the last few years, and talk about some of the threats that still exist. I'm, in the interest of saving time, I'm not going to get too involved in my comments. I'm going to turn it over to one of the most outstanding state employees that I've ever come in contact with, Ted Conlin, and in terms of some of the work that he's been doing with the RAP. Of course, Commissioner Blair has served on that committee, as well as Ron Twining, and over the last 15 years, we've seen some real success here regarding the river. It's sort of a quiet process when you're talking about biological processes, but certainly a successful one. The Black River was identified in the 80s as a major problem area as it relates to water quality issues. You recall a number of the fish tumors that were, and I remember in 1982, when I took over as Health Commissioner, receiving a call from the Smithsonian Institution discussing this. Well, in 1989, the International Joint Commission identified the Black River as one of the 43 areas of concern in the Great Lakes, and of course, the treaty between the United States and Canada really calls for this, these 43 areas to address this problem. And of course, now I'm going to turn it over to Ted and let him really talk about some of the successes and what's happened and what's transpired since that time. Ted?
Thank you, Ken. As Ken said, this started a long, long time ago, and it does go slowly, but there has been improvements. We have been known as, the Black River has been known as the River of Fish Tumors, but since the dredging of the contaminated sediments, that has cleaned up. The RAP Committee essentially has 23 members, and we're charged with the restoration of 14 impairments as set forth by this Canada-United States Committee, and those are the 14 impairments. The Black River RAP process is a slow process, but we have had some improvements. We were at one time known as the River of Fish Tumors. That has since been cleared up because of the dredging that occurred. The committee is made of 23 members, local, state, federal agencies, local businesses, citizens, and we're charged with the restoration of 14 beneficial uses, and the 14 beneficial uses are listed here. The success stories for the Black River are the Fish Habitat Shelf, which is probably the first intentional time someone put this in. They were accidentally put in with dredge spoils up in Canada, and it was noticed that it attracted fish. We put one in, and now Cuyahoga River is looking to put one in. So for once, we're ahead of the Cuyahoga River. We're the first RAP in Ohio to show significant improvements when the fish tumors were improved because of the dredging, and that was granted to us as a change in designation in 2004. 2005, we completely delisted the bottom-dwelling creatures, what I call the bugs, but they're the clams and the mussels, the crayfish, and the larvae of insects. That was granted to us in 2005. We have had many other habitat improvements, including the herons have increased six times in the time that the RAP has been counting their nesting sites and the bald eagles, and we have had some improvements in fish habitat in some areas. But most of the successes have come from regulatory authority, upgrades to wastewater treatment plants, upgrades to collection system, the dredging of the contaminated sediments in Lorraine, required mitigation, and the low-dye restoration. Far fewer success stories have been locally derived. In the past, we were suffering from point sources or from the pipe pollution. That has changed. Now the greatest impacts are coming from over the land or runoff sources of contamination by the way the land is used and developed. Many of the point source problems cannot be controlled by federal and state regulatory authorities. Improving these will call for more direction from local areas. These include runoff pollution and development practices. These are local issues because it is a local issue of the way the land is used and developed. Why local issues? Federal and state authorities don't have any hammer to put down on land use. Local watershed management is needed to address stormwater, agricultural land runoff, and development practices. Three major causes of impacts to the Black River are too much in the way of nutrients, siltation, and organic enrichment, which leads to low dissolved oxygen. These, again, mainly come from non-point source or runoff. They're carried with the silt, with the rainwaters, and they get to the streams. How bad a problem is it? This is the mouth of the Black River after a dry period. And after it rains, it looks like this. This is a sediment plume entering Lake Erie. Sediments easy to show on the screen. It can come from agricultural land, the practices of development where they clearcut or disturb the riparian vegetation or streambank vegetation, and erosion of streambanks. And these are pictures from the Black River. Once the sediment gets to the streams, it can blanket the stream bottoms, eradicating habitat, or even clog fish gills sometime, leading to kills of fishes. The problem doesn't stop with the sediments, which are easy to show. Nutrients cling to the sediments, and together, they're carried down to the streams. The nutrients are too strong, and they can lead to algae blooms, and then low dissolved oxygen and odor problems. Excessive or incorrectly applied herbicides and pesticides can get to the streams in the same way. Another thing that you can't really show on the screen are pathogens, bacteria and viruses. They can come from manure spread on the agricultural fields. And this bottom picture is showing how, they're using smoke to show how the agricultural use of manure can get down into the soil, get into the field tiles, get to the streams, or get into wormholes or cracks, and get to the streams. And also, the bacteria, the viruses and bacteria can get from failing improperly maintained or undersized septic systems. And failed, failing, or improperly maintained septic systems are actually probably not much better than the old outhouse, because at least the old outhouse kept it localized. The septic systems spread it out over the ground if it's not allowed to absorb into the ground. So when you see river water, please think of what else might be in there. It could be our kids. But what can be done? Many things can be done. Some have been started in the watershed and should be allowed to continue. Others should be started soon. Now, I'm going to say one thing, and you probably only hear this from me as a state person. Development of the watershed is both desirable and inevitable. It's going to happen, and it needs to happen. But unless we develop properly, we're going to lose the gains that we've made in the watershed, and things are going to get worse. If things get worse, the wastewater plants will not be allowed to upgrade or expand. If the wastewater plants can't upgrade or expand, there could be restrictions on the amount of development allowed in the watershed. So what can be done? Develop a better local stewardship. Help the rap set up small, local sub watershed groups, which we've had a little trouble in trying to get started. At the local level, they can affect local decisions. They can affect decisions in their own neighborhoods, in their own backyards. Help develop setback ordinances for the county. This will protect the gains that have been made. It will decrease the loads of sediments and nutrients, and herbicides and pesticides, and it will slow the flow and the amount of runoff, which will reduce flooding. Typically, development clearcuts the fields even up to the riverbanks. That just opens the soils for erosion. And if yards are put in right up to the streambanks, the shallow roots of the grass doesn't hold the streambank in place like a tree or shrub, riparian corridor or buffer zone. Setback ordinances are recommended by the Black River Watershed Project Strategy Document that just came out a little time ago. Without development setbacks, this can become something that looks like this, which is in French Creek. And the enhancement and protection of riparian buffer areas is recommended by the Stormwater Phase Two Program. In fact, the enhancement and protection of the riparian corridor is probably the best thing that could ever happen to help improve the Black River watershed. And it's also economically sound. It protects the public water supplies, decreases risks for human health from contact, and lessens the floodwaters' force of runoff that can cause erosion too. Environmentally sound development was recognized by the Lorraine County Comprehensive Plan in 2000, but things have already been happening. This is up in French Creek, and I highlighted in the blue the streams in this particular quadrangle map of USGS. All the little black dots are houses and buildings. And that's what it's like now. I can go back. Then, and now. Here's another section with the streams in blue, and that's what it's like now. Without buffer protection, the streams are losing the brush tree roots that hold the streambanks in place, allowing erosion to happen. You saw that one slide of erosion. That bank was nine feet high. Without buffers, the streams lose their last line of defense, a protective screen against runoff pollution. Another thing that can be done is continue funding for the watershed coordinator position. I think it's very wise to keep someone local for more direct communications with the stakeholders, allow better outreach and educational opportunities. Continue to support the Home Sewage and Treatment System Operation and Maintenance Program from the Health Department. It will reduce organic enrichment and reduce the amount of pathogens getting to the streams. Develop initiatives to enhance available agricultural BMPs, best management practices. Currently, the Black River is the farthest west for the CREP program, where they pay farmers amount of money to take the riparian areas next to the streams out of farm production and let them go natural to a tree shrub so that there's less runoff. Some counties in Ohio have developed programs to augment the funding of these programs to get even more sign up. This will only help to improve the stream when you consider how much of the land in the Black River is farmland, and how much of the time of year that farmland is left uncovered and allowed to erode. Or develop the whole package. Develop a watershed authority, or program, or committee, or whatever, to try to tackle all the agricultural issues, all the storm issues, all the non-point source issues, all the upcoming TMDL issues that are going to be coming down the pike for the Black River. Thank you.
Now, you're going to have a nice little slideshow. But Commissioners, again, we thank you for the opportunity to come here. The Black River rap will continue to improve. The nature of Lorraine County being bordered on Lake Erie makes it even more critical that what we do in our water quality and our watershed impacts that lake. And we've seen some impacts, some of the impacts reduced. And we certainly want to see this continued. And I would again reiterate, it was my suggestion that the stakeholders, government stakeholders and others, sit down and work cooperatively on all the stormwater issues as well as the water quality issues. And I think we can actually develop a watershed plan that would be coordinated and more effective. Finally, I want to compliment the Commissioners and the townships and those individuals in our highly densely populated townships that are moving to sewer those areas. Those home sewage systems built in the 20s, 30s, 40s actually have a great deal of impact on the water quality of the river. And as we sewer those areas, we're going to see the river improve, certainly from the organic insults as well as the bacteria. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation, Ken and Ted. What beautiful pictures. Oh. And you took them all?
Yes.
They're very gorgeous. Thanks again, Ken and Ted. Okay?
Yep.
10:30-ish. We're only about three minutes behind. Commissioner Kaylow should be proud of us.
Very good. Thanks, Ted.
See? He appreciates you. Jim McConnell, Pittsfield Township Clerk.
No problem. Don't bother me. Greetings and thank you for the opportunity to be on today's agenda. Even though the agenda says that I'm here as Pittsfield Township Clerk, I'm acting as a spokesperson for all 18 townships and represent their position, as well as that of many of the villages and cities. Most of the communities are represented here today and may wish to add their comments later on. The concern we bring to your attention today is the level of funding for the 2006 Solid Waste Management District Community Grant Program, and beyond that, for the same grant program in years beyond 2006. As you are aware, these grants provide partial funding for community recycling programs. Most communities have weekly curbside blue bag pickup programs. Six communities have community-centered drop-off programs. These community recycling efforts were initiated 13 and 14 years ago, following the establishment of the Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District, and are funded by a portion of the tipping fees collected at the landfill in New Russia Township operated by Allied Waste Services. The express purpose for levying these fees at the time was to enhance any programs that would reduce the flow of solid waste into the landfill. In years since the inception of these programs, the level of revenue realized by the Solid Waste Management District has increased significantly. However, for the last five years, and as allocated for 2006, the direct funding for the community grant program has declined. This reduction in grant funding has until now been compensated for by each community through expenditures of their, increasing expenditures of their own funds. The recycling programs which each community established years ago, and which they have promoted and supported with local time, effort, and dollars, are in many cases now in jeopardy. Even though community residents have in increasing numbers supported these recycling efforts over the years, many residents are now asking their township trustees and village and city councilpersons if the increasing level of community financial commitment is justified. And even though you today received a recommendation from the Solid Waste Management Policy Committee, and thank you very much, acted positively towards that recommendation, we want to emphasize to you the magnitude of the problem that even we have just realized. The increasing disparity between the revenue to the Solid Waste Management District and the level of funding are questions that are especially relevant when, in most cases, local revenue sources have remained static or have been declining. The widening disparity between Solid Waste Management District revenues and the community grant program funding level, and the resulting additional burden on local budgets, has become even more difficult for local elected officials to justify to their constituents. In a few minutes, Neil Lynch, Amherst Township Trustee, will briefly review some pertinent data we have assembled that will more precisely define the growing disparity and the magnitude of the local problems it has created. However, at this time, let me point out that the Solid Waste Management District revenue from landfill tipping fees have increased nearly 80% since, in the past six years, while funding for the community grant program has been reduced nearly 25%. Due to changes in the funding formula, many communities have experienced significantly higher reductions in their grant funding. Over the past three weeks, we have spoken with nearly every community in this county. Each township and every village and city we have talked with, regardless of the adequacy of funding for these, for their own grant programs, agree that the funding disparity needs to be corrected. Additionally, each community has emphatically stated their desire to continue to support recycling efforts and positively impact the lifespan of the county landfill. However, in a financial environment, when every discretionary expenditure has to be closely scrutinized, some communities are faced with a tough decision regarding its financial support of the recycling programs. These are unfortunately discretionary programs. Today, you acted positively on a recommendation from the Solid Waste Management District Policy Committee. We are grateful and appreciate the action both of the policy committee and your actions today, and the recognition of the financial dilemma that many communities face. However, please keep in mind that when we expressed our concerns to the policy committee last week, prior to their meeting, we did not have a full appreciation for the magnitude of the problem facing the communities who participate in the grant program. Now we do, and it is more significant even than we imagined. As we indicated to the policy committee when we met with them last week, we are not advocating solving this funding discrepancy by reducing funding to any individual community. This is a matter of reallocating existing revenues. Also, as we indicated to the policy committee last week, we are committed to working with that committee and assisting them in any way possible to find a long-term solution to this problem as they work on the Solid Waste Management District Plan Update. Your action today provides a partial, short-term solution to the funding problems. We thank you for your decision today and for allowing this time for us to present our concerns. I'm going to turn this over to Neil right now. He's going to review with you some specific data we've put together. I have an idea that there are other members of the audience that might like to make comments when Neil is done. And obviously, we'll be available for questions at any time. Neil?
Thank you, Jim. Good morning, Neil.
Good morning, Betty. Jim indicated that I'm a trustee in Amherst Township. I'm also here as the executive committee chairperson for the Lorraine County Association of Township Trustees and Clerks. What Jim is passing out to you right now is quantitative data that was emailed to the Commissioners, but they may not have had a chance to look at it. And it's also printed in a much larger format for those of you that have some tired eyes, so that you can follow us as we go through this. Now, Jim has set the framework and introduced the concerns regarding the community recycling program for many of the political subdivisions within the Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District. He's done a good job in terms of the qualitative explanation. What I'm going to follow through here is a quantitative analysis that's going to emphasize some of the points that Jim has made with some actual data. Specifically, what you're going to see here is a review of the annual revenue growth of Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District relative to the revenues, or the proportion of revenues that have been made available for the community recycling programs. We're going to present a different performance metric for the different performance of the various community recycling programs. We're going to challenge some of the possible misconceptions regarding which techniques are effective in terms of the type of recycling programs, and also how we might improve those programs. Then we're going to present the expectations and the financial need of the communities within the Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District necessary to operate successful community recycling programs without decreasing the service levels that the residents within Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District have come to expect. Ultimately, we're going to do what most organizations do when they stand before this podium. We're going to ask the Commissioners for money. We're going to ask you to please fund these programs at the levels that the communities are requesting. And when I say the expected levels, these are the levels that have been provided by the various communities, and under a very tight deadline here. We had actually requested the communities to have their grant applications completed for presentation today. That's very difficult because they know what they're allotted, they know what they need, and as Jim's indicated, they feel there's a large disparity there. So I'm sure many of them were not, I know many of them weren't able to get it completed because I've spoken with many of the various cities and villages and townships directly. And so in that case, if they couldn't provide the information, we said, we'll go ahead and use estimates based on a proportion of the, any change that the other communities have completed and turned in to us. So I'd like the Commissioners to do to follow along here. If you look at the spreadsheets that you have before you, you will see in Chart One. In Chart One, what we're showing here on an annual basis is the tiered disposal fees, or what are commonly referred to as the tipping fees. These are the revenues that are collected based on the amount of waste going into our landfill in New Russia Township. What you see is what those revenue increases have been year to year. And if you look at the numbers from the years 2000 to the years 2004, those are actual numbers. There's no funny numbers there. There's no estimates. If you look at going from 2005 to 2008, those numbers indicate what the revenues would be if the waste put in there is up to the levels, the increased levels, that New Russia Township has allowed in their zoning. Now, those may be somewhat optimistic, and I'm not suggesting that we go to the high end. I think as our policy committee has done in the Solid Waste Plan, and being very prudent, and their estimate of revenues is the appropriate thing to do. But ever so often, we have to check ourselves and look at what those revenues actually are versus what we planned for, and do a reality check. And we're going to do that reality check. If we look at 2004, you will see that, and I'm going to put this in two different ways. Unfortunately, I have a chart that the Commissioners don't have. In 2004, we collected $3,311,168 based on tipping fees. We allowed only $1.2 million for our community recycling programs, significantly less than we allotted back in 2000. If we look at the percentage of what was budgeted based on the tipping fees in the year 2000, we can see that 76% of those tipping fee revenues went towards community recycling programs. In 2004, it's down to 36.24%. What this chart is indicating is had we kept the proportionate share going to the communities for the recycling programs in 2004, the grant funding would have been in the neighborhood of $2.5 million. Over a million dollars, $1.3 million difference. 2005's an estimate. Obviously, we haven't completed 2005 yet. But with the projections and knowing what we've got in terms of going into the landfill at this point in time, there is no foreseeable shortage. Now, let's check those against what was in our plan. These are the figures that you don't have, but they're directly out of the Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District Plan that received the final approval back in June of 2003. The plan indicated that for 2004, the expected revenues for tipping fees would be $2,477,440, and deliberately a conservative figure, which is the right way to plan. In actuality, though, $3,311,168 were collected, a difference of $833,728. If the growth projections continue in terms of the revenues, as they have over the past three years in 2005, we can expect a difference between the projected revenues and actual revenues in excess of $1 million. I want to move on to Chart Two. Chart Two is a different way of looking at some of the performance metrics for our recycling programs, and this is to indicate to the Commissioners- programs, and this is to indicate to the commissioners what potentially could happen if we have to adjust our community recycling programs. The initial information here, you see every community, all 34 communities that are within Lorraine County. It will indicate which ones operate a recycling program, which ones don't, whether their recycling program is a weekly curbside pickup, blue bag program, or whether it's a drop-off program. The values there in terms of recycled tonnage for the years 2001 through 2004 are copied directly out of the 2004 Annual Report of Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District. Indicated in various summaries in that report, also what was indicated in our plan in the past, we talk about where our focus level is in terms of recycling, and naturally, it tends to be within our larger communities. If we look at the total in terms of population, since waste is generated predominantly by people, we're talking predominantly residential here, is Aleria, the cities of Aleria and the cities of Lorraine represent about 40 percent of the population within our district. And so it would make sense that that's probably where we should put our focus, but we can't ignore the remaining 60 percent of our population that participates here. The figures that are in our annual report indicate that those communities, in terms of recycling, do recycle more in the tonnage versus the other communities, a significantly amount more. And many times, we look at that figure and we say, "That's why those are very successful programs." But sometimes, I've had someone tell me that you look at data straight on and then you look at it sideways. We're now going to take a look at this data sideways. If you look at the last four columns, last five columns, you will see the recycled pounds per capita. Again, I want to remind you, people generate waste. Everybody in this room generates waste. If we believe the figures that are in our plans, we generate 4.65 pounds of waste every day for everybody in this room. Everyone in this room can take a counter of every bit of waste that they generate today and see if those national figures are accurate, but those are the estimates we use in our plan. Our attempt is preserving our landfill and our environment by minimizing the amount of waste that goes into the landfill in Russia Township. Well, if you look at these communities, we took those tonnage, these recycled tonnage for each community, and then we converted it in terms of the recycled waste per capita. What you can see is that many of these smaller and medium-sized communities are actually doing an excellent job in terms of recycling, especially when compared to our big brothers. I know that it's been stated in the past that perhaps our programs aren't effective. When you look at this data sideways, it doesn't look that way. Looks like it's okay. Matter of fact, if we look at Lorraine County overall, in totality, our recycled waste, the recyclables in pounds per person in totality in our district over the last four years have been 73.5 pounds for every man, woman, and child. Now, use that as your benchmark and compare it against every other community that's listed on this sheet, and you come to terms in your own mind, which communities have an effective program, which ones need improvement just to come up to average. Also, look at the ones that are doing an excellent job, and maybe what we need to find out is what are they doing? I know when we looked at this stat, it was surprising to us because one community, we've never heard anybody laud and say, "That's the community I want to be like. That's the community that's doing a good job." If we look at this data sideways, it's Avon Lake. I don't see Mayor Burner here today. I don't know if there's a representative from Avon Lake. If there is, raise your hand. I don't see him, but I know that Avon Lake's supporting us in this matter. Over the last four years, the city of Avon Lake has recycled 133.3 pounds per person. We need to find out what they're doing in Avon Lake. Whatever they're doing in Avon Lake, we need to try and do on the other communities. We may have to challenge this data, but again, the source of this data is our 2004 Annual Report of our Solid Waste Management District. You will see some of the other communities have done a good job, but if you want to see how you compare to average, which is probably the same thing we all did in school, you see who the good performers are, you see who the average performers are. The other thing you can see on overall is the difference between a drop-off program and a weekly curbside pickup program. Now, if you glance at this stat, it's not organized in easy fashion that's pleasing the eyes, but you will see in general, the weekly curbside, which is obviously the most convenient for our residents, is more effective than drop-off. Hats off definitely. If you look at Carlisle Township, they have one of the best programs in terms of drop-off. That's up to that community, how they decide is the best of their program, but I think if they look at it, they've got to decide what they want to do to continually improve their program, and if they look at this stat also, they might see that there's also some benefits in the weekly curbside pickup program. I now want to move to Chart Three. What we attempted to do, we could see that obviously when we got the deadline here, everyone knew the deadline to complete our community recycling grants. We all knew what we were doing in terms of struggling with the funding. A group of communities got together to discuss this and what we could do, and it was tough because we didn't have a lot of the data in front of us at the time. We had a lot of emotion, a lot of complaints, and a lot of different ideas of how we can do better. What we really needed to do was get data that we could look at and analyze this and determine is what we're saying really correct. What we requested is that every community within the district be contacted. We asked that they provide the funding levels that they feel are necessary to continue to operate a successful program, or at least at the levels that your residents have come to expect today. Most of the communities we received of the 34 communities, we got 24 that gave us very specific information. Some told us they weren't done, and they talked about roundabout numbers, and to indicate where they gave us those numbers, where they may be roundabouts or where we estimated them, you will see in this column right in the middle of your page there on Chart Three, it says, " requested funding for calendar year 2006." The 10 communities that are in bold print are the ones where we didn't have the actual numbers. So how did we come up with those numbers? Well, what we did is we took of the 24 communities that provided information, we looked at the proportionate difference between what was allotted in the 2006 grant application versus what the communities were requesting. With that, and you'll see a small table down on the right-hand side there, of those 24 communities, there was an average percent increase over the allotted of 50.09 percent. We then took that factor and applied that against the communities that weren't able to complete their information, and we actually added that on to what they were allotted. In doing so, we came down with a total for the requested funding of those communities Also, of those communities that provided the information, we also asked for what their community's contribution was going to be for their program, both in cash and in kind. That's in the last column there for the community contribution. We had to do the same thing for the communities that didn't have their grants finished or didn't provide the information. We gave the same, we took what they were showing, and if it was over the $15,000, we said, "They have to put a minimum of 50 percent." So we took half of what they were requesting and said, "We know that's a minimum. They must, must contribute." That being the case, these 34 communities will contribute $1,070,123 towards a recycling program. It's not that they aren't contributing to their recycling program. We look at this and we say, "Well, what's the difference?" That small table to the bottom left there shows the difference between what these communities requested and what the communities were allotted. I can tell you, I really do appreciate that our Solid Waste Management Policy Committee encouraged the additional $250,000, and I thank the commissioners for approving that today. That really puts a significant dent in the disparity, but there's still a disparity. If we look at what the communities indicated is necessary to continue to operate their programs at the current levels, there's a disparity of $600,576. So now, we can take $250 off of that, and that's the difference we're looking at trying to make up. And again, I want to go back to that initial chart. The communities are asking for $1,859,587. If we look at the year 2006, which is what we're talking about, the 2006 program year on Chart Number One, and we look at what anticipated revenues would be, and again, those anticipated revenues are somewhat optimistic, but if we look at what the grant funding would have been had it stayed in the same proportion as it was in calendar year 2000, community recycling programs would be funded at a level of $2,975,000. The communities were asked to just put down what they felt they needed. They're asking for $1,859,587. That's the quantitative analysis. Thing is, what do we do? This isn't necessarily something all the communities will agree with, but there are points of discussion that the communities have had. One is, we obviously can tell we formed a pseudo-alliance in trying to address this. We already have an alliance in Lorraine County. We have a Lorraine County Community Alliance. It's possible that that alliance, which represents all of these communities, may be able to also add some sort of ideas or intercede and determine how we can have a more effective program and increase recycling to ultimately meet the objective, the objective of preserving a landfill and sustaining our environment. That's important. They may be able to give us additional efficiencies in terms of operation. They may be able to give us additional efficiencies financially, but that's something the communities need to decide if they want the alliance interceded, but the alliance does represent all of these communities. We will be consuming that landfill at a much faster rate than had we been recycling. That not only affects our residents, that affects our businesses, that affects our employers, the people that employ the residents here. We need to preserve that landfill. We need to have a good recycling program. Things would be different if the fundings, if the funds weren't there. The funds are there. We see them as public information. It's not something that can be hidden. We understand that when times are tough, we all tighten our belt. We also understand when there's a bonnetful harvest, we all share and reap the awards. With that, again, I want to thank the commissioners. I know there's going to be some confusion for all the communities in their grant applications. I do apologize to those that did complete theirs because I'm sure there's going to be some adjustments right now. I'm open to any questions you have. There's a good chance I may not have the answer, but there's enough informed individuals here at this meeting that know this information much better than I do. And I'd really, my request to the commissioners, whatever's in your authority, and from what I can see in the plan, this may require an adjustment or going back with our policy committee. If we can somehow improve the funding levels for 2006, that'd be greatly appreciated by the communities. And thank you. I'm open to any questions you may have, and there may be others that wish to speak.
Thank you, Neil. I guess just for a point of clarity, the addition that you, that is requested via Chart Three is not the 600,000 that's shown since we already approved an additional 250,000.
Correct.
So it's 350,576.61.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to establish that for the record.
Yeah, Neil, stick around. I like statistics because I've been doing these myself all week, and I've, we've had plenty of discussion with other trustees on the recycling money and such, and had the opportunity about a week and a half ago, Amherst Township trustee, Mr. Yergin, myself went at it quite heavily in my office at my store. So in trying to find as much information as possible, David and I actually called the EPA, spoke to a man named Mr. DiAmato, who then sent us towards all the Ohio Revised Codes and what we were discussing on how recycling is to be done. We went up to Ohio Revised Code 37452790 on what the standards were for the Solid Waste Management Districts. And David, probably if you come up here and join Neil, we can do some dialogue here on And as we talked about it, we both left out of there not really whole and not really fulfilled, and my point didn't get across, and Mr. Yergin's point didn't get across, but it was a good discussion. After going through the code in discussion, Mr. DiAmato explained that we contribute a lot to blue bag recycling. Most communities around the state have quit doing that. They've gone to drop-offs, even though our other funding levels have gone up in other solid waste districts. I see a, on our breakdowns, you're talking about the communities that participate. Avon Lake City does an absolutely wonderful job, but we have in our county 280, 290,000 residents. The top 180,000 residents and the top households in our county, seven of the 10, which are included Avon Lake, Aleria, Lorraine, North Ridgeville, Oberlin, Sheffield Lake, Amber Millian, the residents all participate. As a resident city of Lorraine, I pay approximately $30 a year for my blue bag recycling, and the city uses that money to do other things with their grant funding. And David and I spoke about, I felt the citizenry should pay because if you have a buy-in to it, it means more to you. If it's just given to you and taken away, you never miss it. If you actually pay for something, it's no different than getting a ticket to a concert or a dinner. If you don't pay for it, you feel no reason to go to it. If you spent that 15 or 20 dollars, you want to show up because you have an investment in the process. And we're talking about basically residential recycling through the Solid Waste Plan, and their discussions are, the EPA would like 25 percent on the residential end and 50 percent on post-consumer construction materials. And I referred to Part D on this, the plan includes strategies for Solid Waste Management District, which I brought up in the past, and I have familiarity with the Solid Waste Plan because I've been working with recycled products since '92 with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, my private business. And what they said the Solid Waste Plan is, or what they recommend is, the Solid Waste Management District help communities find better ways of doing it, not only with the government sector, but with the private sector, the generators, on how to do a better job of recycling material. And it's quite long-winded, and I can give this to anybody who'd like it afterwards. I can make copies for it. But also doing waste audits for local businesses, assistance to local communities, marketing, collecting materials, and then workshops, conferences, seminars, advertising, everything we're doing right now. And my understanding with the EPA is, what we give is very generous to help the communities in blue bag and do recycling, and there are other ways of doing it via the drop-off. I know Penfield Township has their own recycling center. Carlisle does a nice job with it. Blue Bag does a nice job also. I'm not discounting what the benefit of the Blue Bag is, but when you're giving 1.2 and now 1.5 million dollars, and it's not split up equitably. If you take it based on population and/or household throughout our county, which is in your numbers here, which I broke down off the numbers we have, the city of Lorraine, which is the largest municipality we have in the county, each resident receives $2.43 per population towards recycling or $6 per household on average, whereas we go to the upper end of it, and let me make sure I have all my charts right, okay? We have population counts in some of the townships and villages, anywhere from $18 to $20 per person receives towards recycling and up to $50 per household. I think there's an inequitable distribution of funds there when you're looking to increase the recycling. When you have the largest populations not receiving near as much money per capita, I don't think it's being an equitable split. So, I mean, that's my response back. If we're going to give more money, I think we should rework the formula to where it's done based on the population. There shouldn't be such a discrepancy where I live in the city of Lorraine, or Commissioner Kokowski does, and we get $2.43 per person or $6 per household, and we are giving, you're in Amherst Township, and I will get your number here. Amherst Township receives 7.75 per population. You're receiving three times the amount of money per person in your township than what I'm receiving in my city. That's not equitable throughout when we're collecting the money. I don't have a disagreement with how the money, the amount of money that's being I don't have a disagreement with how the money, the amount of money that's being asked for, but I think it should be split up equitably. And if I can have any help from their solid waste or our expert, that's my discussion with all this. It's been that way all year, David and Neil. So, I mean, you have comments, David? You were in the same conversation I was.
I know that we did speak with the gentleman from the EPA.
David, speak to the microphone, please.
Come on, David. Come on up.
We did speak with the gentleman from the EPA, and one of the things that he did bring up was the preponderance in the state of the drop-off programs and the tendency in the state to go to drop-off programs. I, I also know too that we do have a large landfill in this county, and that generates quite a bit in tipping fees. Many areas don't have that type of a situation, so hence, we do spend more, but we also generate more in the, in the county. I under, I understand some of the, I know in talking with you, I understand the points, and I understand the points you're making, particularly in some of the entities where they've gone ahead and established fees for recycling. One of the items brought up is, in general, the townships aren't set up, up to establish and collect those fees in the county. We may have the authority at some point, but no, no township in the county has that type of program. So it'd be very difficult for us to, to establish fees. The second item was, you know, I, I can understand in a certain entity saying, you know, we're paying here out of our pockets, but they're not, you know. I, I think, you know, my feelings would be if more money could be put to the larger cities, if not eliminate, which would maybe be difficult for them, but at least offset or subsidize some of what's being paid in Lorain, in Alaria, in the other cities that have established a fee for recycling. I, I don't see where there would be a problem in that. I, I think that would be good for them. If something could be done to reduce the person's bill in those cities, their refuse bill, their refuse recycling bill by a dollar, $1.25 a month or kick something in for them.
No, dude, it's not my question. If we participate, it's not reducing by a dollar, $1.50, then the citizens of the communities are patient and pay either. I don't think that is an equitable structure. Everybody pays or nobody pays, especially when there's funding dollars out there to do it. And I think the guise of the EPA and our solid waste policy board, by my following it outside of the public sector, is there are other things to do with those tipping fees. We have an economic development department that uses those fees. Dan, you probably have to help me with the numbers we're allowed for helping companies purchase recycled equipment and such.
$500,000.
It's $500,000. That money is used towards that, which is creating jobs and employment, which refers back to what Mr. Lynch said. I don't think asking for more money for Blue Bag Recycling is the direction to go. If the communities are only doing so much, I mean, ask Avon Lake, ask Carlisle, ask Penfield what a good job they're doing with their percentages. And I haven't heard many complaints from those communities. They haven't called and saying they have to have to continue because they're doing other things right. I have offered in the past that we should let our solid waste management district possibly hire experts to help the communities do a better job. Sheffield Township, I spoke to, they're looking to do a pickup of some sort. They're asking for a vehicle next year, I believe, when Pat Echo spoke to me, the township clerk. They're very happy. I just think it's always been in the past that monies were expended, but there was no watching the henhouse. I'm sorry, that's my feelings on this, and I've had these disagreements with Mr. Billman over the years. But if we're going to redistribute this or add anymore, I'd like to see it redone by the population or the household count. I can't see just giving it to people who don't participate in it. I think you should go back to decisions who participate also.
But I still feel, I know we've had this discussion before, but...
We've been doing this for a year, David.
It keeps the programs going, and it's stated earlier in previous conversations even, that by reducing the amount of grant money that the entities get, it increases the amount that they have to come up with from their general fund, from other sources. That's money that was going somewhere else that's now going into recycling. And many communities have to make the decision, am I going to do this or am I going to do something else? Going like, for example, you know, our senior services office is running us, say roughly $20,000 a year, which would be, if according to the original figures, which would have had us at $48,000, we would be subsidizing our recycling program more than our senior services office. And we have to look at how we're spending our funds, and we have to ask the questions. The question, is this right? You know, we're spending more on this than we are on that, and it, there's, you can't justify that in my mind.
I agree. Not arguing in the least, but since I've been here, it seems that there's been a very combative relationship between solid waste dollars and the different political subdivisions. And I think we have to find a way that everyone can get along to help the townships. I met with Mayor Taylor and Mr. Johnson from BFI in my office, and Ms. Mayor Taylor told me, he doesn't have a solid waste person. He has to do it among all his other duties. And I offered again, what is wrong with expending some of the funds that are in there to help the other communities do a better job with the funds they receive? So we continue to do the other mandates of the solid waste. I don't think the EPA drew this all up just for us to pick up blue bags. I don't think that was the intent of the law that was passed. So that's why I'm saying it's got to be a better working relationship, but I think the smaller communities, whereas the cities have people who do this for the elected offices, the townships and villages don't have that availability. I understand that based on dollars and cents, you can't afford to hire somebody to handle just solid waste. But I think if you would let our department through the solid waste actually work with you guys to do a better job with the money you do get, because we do have it in our budget to go after the things you're asking for, to increase the recycling, which is very important to me. I mean, I'd love to be hitting that 25% threshold the EPA would like us to do. I mean, that's a long shot. I mean, everybody wishes those things would happen. So, I mean, that's my status on it. You know, any questions anybody wants to talk to me about, I'm more than willing to discuss and what I feel and relook the numbers over if you've gotten another sideways of looking at them. You look from the left, I look from the right or opposite, so.
Ted, if you look at the way people put refuse out, okay, you've got, with the Blue Bag Program, you've got two piles, okay? You've got the refuse, the quote garbage pile, you've got the recyclables. Okay? The future of this has got to be, you've got to get more from the refuse pile to the recyclable pile.
Correct.
And I think the concept of picking up at the curb is a, is a sound concept. It makes as much sense as picking up the refuse, because in essence, that's what it is. It's refuse, but it's refuse that can be reused. So in that way, it being part of the program, I, I think in the futuristic, I don't think it's necessarily bad or necessarily efficient anymore than maybe we should eliminate curbside pickup of refuse and have a centralized, have a centralized refuse disposal. So I think in the long term, I think in the long term, the Blue Bag Program could be sound. However, the point is, how do you get more from the refuse side into the blue bag side? That's the key. Okay? You need to get more people to do it. You need to get more, find more, recycle more directly or find more products that you can put into the blue bag so that there's less on the refuse side of the equation. That's, so, and I'd like to see the blue bag continue. I'd like to, but it's, by continually lowering the funding, then it puts us in these tough, these tough situations. We have to make these economic decisions, which way we're going to go with our funding. And that concerned me. There's, there's money there. And we're not, the entities, the townships, the villages, the cities, we're not, we understand what you're saying. We understand what you're saying about some paying, some not on that side. We're trying to be fair. We're trying to be equitable. We've got this program that we've established over the years, and in some ways, over the last several years, we feel like the rug's being pulled out from under it, and all of a sudden, we've got this program, and we're not going to be able to fund it.
It's like returning indigent fees, we feel, up here with the State of Ohio pulling it out from underneath us, David.
All right. But anyway, the point is, you know, we're not, we're not with a lack of understanding of the rest of the county. And however, we do see that there's money there. We do see there's money in the solid waste, and we know it's coming from generation of solid waste. And as Neil said earlier, you know, part of the, part of the point of the solid waste district is to reduce the amount that goes into the landfills. And also, I always like to emphasize, it gets used to items that would otherwise be buried to perpetuity in a landfill. It's a good program. It's a positive thing, and I'd like to see, like to see it continuing, but there's money available. And that's, that's what is being seen, is it's not going, that's going somewhere else. We, we would like to keep a good portion coming, a good portion of the required money coming back.
Thank you, David.
And even if you look, even if you look at, I'm sorry, one more thing. Even if you look at what Neil presented, it's what would it take to keep these programs up? He's said 1.8 million. Even 1.8 million isn't the full 3.2 or 3.4 million of the budget of the solid waste district.
Thank you, David. Linda Jacobs from Carlisle Township, I believe, has some comments she'd like to make.
Thank you, commissioners, for hearing me today. I'd like to speak on behalf of drop-off programs, specifically Carlisle Township. If you look at your Chart Number Two, which was supplied to you, I can actually say that these numbers reported here are not the numbers that are reported by Carlisle Township at our final report each year. We actually have done a much better job than this, and on September 27th, I sent a letter to Mr. Billman asking if these numbers could be corrected, and if not, why not? We actually, if you'll go through them with me, give me this moment. In 2001, it says we collected 195 tons. We actually collected 259, as reported on our final report. 64 tons we were not given. 2002 says 289. We collected 392, a difference of 103. In 2003, we were given 199. We actually collected 347, a difference of 148 tons. In 2004, it's reported at 265. We reported 328 collected, a difference of 63 tons. Over four years, we collected 378 tons not reported on the solid waste. I'd like just to know why. As a drop-off, we are doing our part and doing very well. We are always instituting new programs. We collect many items that your Blue Bag Program does not collect daily, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days of the year. Thank you.
You do a very nice job out there, Linda. I've talked to Barry Taylor and Kenny Freckel before, my fellow commissioner. You guys do a very nice job. Maybe you can help everybody else with how you do it.
Thank you.
The residents bring that stuff up there. Thanks, Linda. Rob Scheitower, Lariat Township.
My name is Rob Scheitower. I'm an Alaria Township trustee and also the Alaria Township Recycling Coordinator, and I'm speaking on behalf of our Board of Trustees, William Holtzman and Rick Hutman. I know we are pressed for time. I do have a little handout here if the commissioners would like to receive it, and I'd like to speak on a few numbers that's very concrete for Alaria Township. Just would like to reflect on these numbers that I presented to the Board of Commissioners, and they're very concrete for Alaria Township to have this program go forward for year 2006. As you can see on the top of the page, it's $29,955 available funding for Alaria Township for 2006. Alaria Township's very accurate home count right now is 1,462. You take that times $2.50 the Allied Waste Service charges per household, that monthly check to Allied Waste is $3,655 even. Take that times 12 months a year, we're at $43,860 paid out to Allied Waste Services for a year. The grant needed is $43,860. We did our 50% match. That brings it down to $21,930, and I appreciate your comment, Mr. Kalo, that the residents should participate. This is our residents' participation. This comes out of our general fund.
I'm saying it's a separate, Rob, I mean, and just take your population number of households, roughly 1,500. That's $10 a household or less than a dollar a month. Participate in recycling in the Blue Bag Program if you guys had it as part of the billing process.
This, this is our recycling grant, match. The $21,930 is just for the recycling match.
That's out of your general fund, though.
That is correct.
That's not out of a per-household contribution.
The per-household, this is coming from our residents into our general fund.
Correct. Out of the general fund, which you pick up with your, you know, non-taxable revenues, whatever your...
Our residents pay for their own, our residents pay for their own garbage pickup.
They pay for their garbage disposal?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Do they have an additional fee for recycling on there, like the larger municipalities?
Not with this recycling grant. This recycling grant reflects this number. This $21,930 is half of the match that we need to participate in this program. We don't mind, the Alaria Township does not mind paying this match. But as I go down, I want to, I'll show you some other numbers here.
All right.
The total grant, as you can see in the center column, is going to be $65,790. That's the total match and the grant needed. If you take that needed grant and you subtract the $29,955, the available funding for 2006, we come up short, $13,905. If you take that township match of $21,930 plus the $13,905, which is the short funding, we are paying $35,835 out of our general fund for this program. If you look at that bottom number and if you look at that top number, it's like Alaria Township is supporting or funding the Blue Bag Program and solid waste is supplying the match.
I mean, that goes back to our inequities here, Rob. I don't have a problem. I broke your, Alaria Township receives about $8 per population on funding for the solid waste grants, and works out $20 per household. You're somewhere in the lower middle end of funding for that.
That's correct.
Again, I'll go back to, I don't believe it's an equitable split up of the money.
Right.
I'm not going to argue, Alaria Township does a nice job. I'm not, but when you take the breakdown of the dollars and where they go to and expend it based on population, which is what we work our government at, it's population. You're not becoming a city unless you have so many residents. You're not a village, you're not a township based on residents. That's where the inequities are in that.
Well, I would like to ask the commissioners if they could have a meeting with the policy committee and to maybe discuss this extra funding that is needed. Alaria Township really needs this funding. We really want to have this program go forward. We had a questionnaire go out in our April newsletter, and we also had a questionnaire go out in our September newsletter requesting the residents to get back with us, would they rather spend the money on the Blue Bag Program or put this $35,000 into our roads and ditches? And the majority of the letters we got back was, they made a comment, get out of the Blue Bag Program. We want our roads in service.
What would the cost for Alaria Township if you did drop-off boxes similar to Carlisle?
The problem is with Alaria Township, we have one and a half acres of property. We are in the process of looking for future land, but as we stand right now with the roof cover we have on our one and a half acres, we do not have the area to have a trailer drop-off facility. We did look at Carlisle's Township. We went over to, was it Penfield Township? And we looked at their facility, and we don't have that type of room at this, at this time.
Are you guys exploring that possibility, though, or doing a public-private partnership with someone who does have available land?
Well, we would like to continue the curbside pickup. That's what most of the residents would like to see go forward. So I'd just like to thank you for letting me say a few words here. These, these numbers that I presented to the Board of Commissioners are very accurate and are very concrete. And we really would like to have the commissioners consider when, I'm going to, I'm going to submit this grant tonight or this evening when I leave here, and I'm going to reflect these numbers on our grant, and hopefully that Alaria Township can participate in year 2006.
Thank you, Rob.
So thank you again, and I'd like to commend Mr. McConnell and Mr. Lynch on their excellent presentation tonight for Lorain County Board of Trustees and clerks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Taylor from Amherst.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm not going to beat this to death. As you remember, I met with each of the individuals last summer, hoping to get this resolved, and we're basically, I'll summarize it very succinctly. If we don't get the additional funding that we need... If we don't get the additional funding that we need to help from this, city council has directed me to, at this point in time, two possibilities. Go to the drop-off program if we see fit to do that, or also, or the other possibility of getting out the program completely and just getting out of recycling.
And you haven't approached the subject of the residents paying yet, Mayor?
We've discussed it, yes, and they're not interested.
Okay.
City council's not interested in going that route. We feel that at some point in time, and you always can't look back, and I understand that, and none of you, and Betty, you were probably here, but the rest of you weren't here, we understand that. But the fact of the matter is, we don't feel that we should be charging our residents part of this. We pay $61,000, based on the $123,000 grant we got in 2003, our matching is $61.5. We think that's enough. And we do an all-out effort to do that. We do a good job of promoting it. Are we perfect? No. And you're talking per capita, Mr. Kallo. Ours is pretty high if you look at that, and we recognize that, but it's not from a lack of not trying. The fact of the matter is that our city council feels that in these times of high gasoline prices, high utility costs, natural gas prices going up, for us to put another charge on our residents is completely out of the question, especially since the fact that there are surpluses in this fund. Now, if you were broke like everybody else, if this fund was broke like everyone else, then we could understand, so you got to cut back. But when there's surpluses and the money is there, it defies comprehension of why we can't do this and give the citizens that aren't paying now, even though some are, but that's not our fault, an opportunity to go ahead with it and continue our grant at the same levels as they were in 2000, based on that 76% tier. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greenberg, would you like to speak just a little bit to the plan and the formula that exists now and how we got at the allocation, just for general information purposes, and especially because Commissioner Kallo has pointed out a disparity with the additional not requested, and I would just like you to clarify how the existing formula is distributed. Please.
Good morning. The formula...
Tell me where you are.
I'm Michael Greenberg with GT Environmental. We're the consulting firm that helps work with the district and prepare the solid waste management plan. The funding formula that is currently in place for the community grant program was established by the policy committee a couple of years ago in response to concerns about equity as far as how the grants were given. Prior to that commissioner, they were done based on population back in the 80s, but that was changed in the 2002, 2003 time period. The funding formula is based right now on population. A portion of the dollars are allocated based on population. It's also based on households in the community, so there's two levels there. Each community gets funding based on their population, their households. There's also a large percentage of the dollars allocated in the funding formula are based on the type of program that's offered by the community. So if it's a Blue Bag program that all the residents are served by, they get a higher amount of dollars for that type of program than a drop-off program. The reason for that is because that helps the solid waste district meet the state goals for reaching the 90% access requirement. The fourth tier in the funding formula is a dollar per ton recycled amount, that the more tons that you recycle, the more dollars are allocated that way. So there's a, it's basically four components to that funding formula that the policy committee established, and that's how the dollars are allocated.
That's helpful, I think, in the discussion.
Okay. The policy committee is going to be reevaluating that as we move forward in the next planning cycle.
And that's for the year beginning 2007?
Correct.
Yes. Jim has a question.
On the tonnage, the, let's say the tonnage out of Lorraine, is that simply the tonnage that's picked up by BFI on the curb?
It's based on the tonnage that's reported by the community, that most of them get that information from BFI and return, and it's based on the four types of materials that are required to be collected in each program. Each program has a stipulated four materials, newspapers, plastic, glass, and aluminum, steel containers. So it's based on those materials.
That doesn't include, excuse me, that doesn't include the private vendors who do recycling also, the pickup of newspapers and glossy magazines and such like that? Those numbers aren't reflected? Where schools do paper drives and, you know, collecting of cans and recyclables?
Right. If those, those numbers do get reflected in the totals when they're reported to the district for those communities.
But do they get reflected in the funding for the tonnage? Now, I know in Lorraine, you don't need BFI to come around and pick up your blue bags with cans and metal in them. There's plenty of people doing that for a living over there, okay? So you're not going to, you're not going to get that reflected in the tonnage numbers from BFI for what they pick up. How does that community, and communities similar to Lorraine, such as Alaria, where you have a large portion of those blue bags being picked up for people to take to the recycle, the recycler, and a couple of them are located in Lorraine for a profit?
Right.
How does the community get credit for that blue bag?
Right now, those are not probably being credited because those, what's being credited is what the communities are reporting in their grant process.
Yeah, it's just interesting, because I can tell you right now, a bag of cans doesn't last on my street till BFI comes and gets them.
Correct, and we have the same...
So if you have the processors, if you were to include the processors, the processors would definitely have to keep track of where that waste is, or the recyclables are coming into them from.
Aren't they supposed to do that now by law, anyway?
No.
No, they're not required as a private...
No, processors, there's, that's one of the problems with the state law from the solid waste districts perspective, is that there are no requirements for the processors to report to the solid waste districts, nor the haulers.
Do you see recycling becoming mandatory in the state of Ohio anytime soon, somewhere like a California or other state?
No.
Mandatory, no. Okay.
No. Actually, one of the things that was tried with the Lorraine County Solid Waste Management Plan, with the initial plan that we submitted to EPA back in 1990, 1991, was to have mandatory recycling, and EPA stated that our laws do not allow for that, and that's how the community grant program came into place.